Good morning, everyone. In accordance with Section forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. Before I continue with my remarks, I'll just take a moment to introduce some of the people on the, at the front here. First, the panel. On my far left is Mr. Stan Kamork. On my immediate left is Mr. Dominic Gully. On my immediate right, to join us hopefully shortly, is Mr. Rick Ross. And on my far right is Ms. Sophia Ruddock. On my left, at the end of this desk, is our Deputy Secretary Treasurer, Barbara Bartosik. And in front of me, we have our support staff, and at the far end of this desk on the right as well. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that applies to property, permission to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. We acknowledge that the land we're meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnaabe, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, and others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting with their computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone, and have the option of participating via video or audio only. All virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. We ask that you also mute your devices until you're called on to speak. Those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelist when your item is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time. At all other times, your video will be disabled, and you will be reinstated as an attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating through WebEx are not allowed to use share screen or any other panelist controls during a video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect this instruction. People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must fill out a decision request card, and they're sitting on the wall at the front here. And those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address, because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto local appeal body will be sending notifications and appeals updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal body, T-Lab, or in some limited circumstances to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons and public bodies, as those terms are defined in the Planning Act, are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set at the bottom of the decision of the committee. Our hearing procedure will be that I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda, with the exception of some items where the applicant has requested deferral. We'll dispense with those up front in the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation, if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching the five minutes. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept materials at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to the committee on the application. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application of substantially revised to ensure the revised application is accurate, and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Then, individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we first call on speakers in the hearing room, and then those participating through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. Before hearing our first item, we require confirmation of the minutes of the last meeting that was held on January the sixteenth. May I have a motion to adopt those minutes?
Mr. Chair, I'll gladly move a motion to adopt the minutes from January sixteenth.
And I think I'll second them. I think we're the only two.
We're the only two on this panel.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. The minutes of November sixteen, or January sixteenth are adopted. Panel, are there any declarations of interest for items in this morning's agenda? None. And staff? None? Okay, good. Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, have you request any requests for deferral on this morning's agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have items two, ten, fourteen, and eighteen.
Thank you. And Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, are there any files to be closed this morning?
Not today, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay, then, let's proceed with the items where the applicant has requested deferral. The first is item two, seventeen Art Tech Court, and the agent is Sarfaraz Chadri. Is Sarfaraz online? Okay.
Hello.
Hello.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and all the committee members. So, we put this application and then started to our discussion with the...
Sorry, sir. Sir, sorry. Hello, hello, sir. Please stop talking, sir. You need, we need your name and address up front. And I'm also gonna, I'm also gonna caution you that you did not register to speak with us today.
Can you hear me, please?
Yeah, but obviously, you can't hear me. I need your name and address, and I need you to know that you did not register to speak with us today. Technically, we don't, do not have to listen to you, but we will, if, before you say another word.
I am here.
Before you say another word, I want the next word to be your name, and I want the following words to be your address. Then you can speak to us, okay? Can you hear me, sir? Okay, let's...
Can you hear me? No, I cannot hear you, sir.
You cannot hear me? So we have a technical problem, or...
Mr. Chair, I think from my end, looks like it's fine. Sarfaraz, can you please ident, give us your name and your address?
Yeah, my name is Sarfaraz Chadri, and my address is seventeen Art Tech Court, North York, for the application. I am representing the applicant. I am the applicant.
And who, who is that, six-six-three-two Lysgar Drive in Mississauga?
That's our company.
That's what we're looking for, your address, not the...
This is Ashford International, and he's our client, and we are representing...
Okay, are we satisfied that this gentleman has appropriately identified himself? Okay, please tell us why you want deferral today.
Yes, sir, actually, we applied for variances, and then Mr. No O'Brien. I received an email on December eighteen, and the issue was the separation distance between the two buildings, existing dwelling and the accessory building, because it was only one point five two meter, which, as per him, was not sufficient for the safety reasons. And so, during our discussion, he suggested that we may change the location of the accessory buildings to get the appropriate distance, separation distance, and we have to reapply for the zoning, and then they will issue us the various...
Okay, is that, is that it?
Afford this application so that we can prepare a new design and put on a new location to satisfy the separation distance.
Okay, is that, is that all you have to say? Are you finished speaking? Okay, panel, any questions for Mr. Chadri?
Excuse me?
No. No questions, okay.
Other speakers?
No other speakers.
So can we go into committee then for a decision? So would you care to make a motion on this request for deferral?
Chair, I'll make a motion. At the applicant's request for a deferral, I move that we defer the application in order for the applicant to clearly identify the se, side yet separation that they're seeking to provide. Move approval of the deferral at the applicant's request.
Thank you, Mr. Gully. Is there a second there for that?
I'll second.
Ms. Ruddock, thank you. All in favor? Okay, that matter has been deferred unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Chadri. Our next deferral item requested by the applicant is item number fourteen, which is one hundred Glen Aiden Avenue. Mr. Eagleman, thank you. And will you please give us your name and address?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair, committee members. David Eagleman, eighty-seven Skyway Avenue, Suite two hundred, associate and planner here on behalf of the owner. Through you, Mr. Chair, we are requesting a deferral for two reasons. One was that there were two missed variances in the zoning review process for length and depth that were identified, unfortunately, after the public notice has gone out. So, we're deferring, we're defer, we're requesting a deferral in order to provide adequate public notice for those two additional variances. And further to that, planning staff have also raised some concerns with those two variances that were identified late, and so we are working with planning at this point to try and find a resolution to those concerns. We are already rescheduled for February sixth, as the committee staff have rescheduled us for February sixth, as it was originally just a notice issue.
Right.
So now we're sort of under a bit of a time constraint to get the revised plans and new zoning notice in, but we will do our best such that I don't have to request a deferral for a second time on February sixth.
So you're okay if we defer it to that specific hearing date?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair.
We could defer a signee die, but you're already scheduled for it, so are you okay to leave that?
Yes, we do have revised plans ready. I've provided those to staff and the zoning examiner, so I'm hoping that we will be able to get the new zoning notice before the sixth.
Okay.
So in the future, we will not be rescheduling prematurely to avoid...
Understood. Thank you.
Do you want to change your mind?
No, I, yeah, thank you.
Okay, so panel, any questions for Mr. Eagleman? If not, a motion to grant his request for deferral. And please be specific that it's deferred to the hearing on February the sixth, if you wish to recommend deferral.
I will, I will move that we defer the application as it is currently scheduled for February sixth, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Is there a second there?
I'll second that, in order for the applicant to revise.
Thank you, Mr. Kamork. All in favor? Okay, the denial request has been approved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Eagleman.
Mr. Chair, if we could also do item ten, that's the one where there was a...
Ah, yeah, okay, yeah, let's, let's take a look at item ten.
While you're bringing that up, Mr. Chair, I want to bring to your attention there is an area neighbor, virtually, for this one.
Yes, I think I'm aware of... Too many pages here. Angelo Mangiorti. Yeah, okay, good.
And they are present on the call.
Okay, so now, this, this one's, we, we don't have a request for deferral here, but in the original application, if you can just take a look at the original notice for this one, item ten, and look at variance five. You will see that the variance requested, it says that the minimum required building setback of a platform of the main walls is zero point nine meters, and the variance requested is that the proposed rear platform would be located zero point nine one meters. So, it appears that, in fact, there's no variance required. However, if you look at the additional materials that was sent in, there's a, there's a revision to the application which correctly identifies that the platform should be one point two meters. And again, the proposed platform is zero point nine one. So our issue is, as we know, typically, where a revised variance is worse than the original requested, we treat it as an automatic deferral, because technically, the public was not notified properly the first time that there is, in fact, a required, a required variance. However, we don't, it's up to us. We don't, we don't need to abide by that protocol or practice if we're satisfied that it's not really germane to the public interest. Because the variance being requested is the same, it's just that the zoning standard was incorrectly stated initially. So I guess, I guess we need to, is Mr. Dome available virtually firstly? Joe?
Yes, Joe Dome, one thirty-three Torresdale Avenue, agent for the owner.
Yeah, Joe, were you following along with the little preamble on this?
Yes, yes, we were informed by staff that there was the error on the, on the public notice for variance five, but we, we would accept a deferral, a request for deferral. We would also like the opportunity to allow for submitting a revision to the drawings, further improving the breakup of massing of the proposed dwelling, and allow for time for planning staff to review.
Okay, so you're contemplating some changes over and above this variance five issue?
So there wouldn't be, in the revision, there wouldn't be changes to the variances, except for a correction to variance six, which lowers that floor, total floor area, but it would improve the breakup of massing. It would involve moving the garage to the opposite side, which would dramatically lower the, the main wall length on each side of the dwelling. It would reduce it to seventeen point seven on the north side, seventeen point five on the south side.
Okay, well, let's, before we proceed, let's, let's hear from Angelo Mangiorti. He's registered to speak to this application. Mr. Mangiorti?
Hello, committee, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, we can, hi. Just, I, I hope you've been following the discussion along here a little bit. There's an issue with variance five.
Correct, I've been, I've been following along, first of all, I'm Angelo Mangiorti.
So I guess, as, as, as the agent has said, that they'd be okay to accept a deferral on this, to correct that, and potentially improve variance six along the way, to address and improve on the massing of the, of the project?
Can we get Angelo Mangiorti's address?
Sure, my address is three seventy-three Markland Drive in Otobicoke. I'm calling in with respect to forty-nine Bellman Avenue. Those are my parents. I'm representing them. They are currently out of country.
So what is their address?
Forty-nine Bellman Avenue, so the neighboring unit, neighboring lot to forty-seven that we're currently discussing.
Okay, so the panel hasn't decided yet on whether to defer or not, but should we go in that direction? Would you be agreeable to a deferral to a later date? To clarify this...
Um, I, I think, actually, I would be in, in favor of that due to two main reasons. First of all, my parents and no one, none of the neighbors that I've discussed this with have received the formal notice in the mail. Everything's been based on the, online and in relation to the, I guess, site requests that's been affixed to the property. So, we haven't had much time to even sift through it. My parents are, were out of town, as I mentioned, and I made them aware of the fact that this proceeding was going to, this hearing was going to be currently happening today, and they've been, they submitted a, the documents of opposition for a variety of reasons, but it's been posted, but it would be better if they were in town to discuss this, so...
Yeah.
I would be in favor of deferring this.
And, and it sounds like you'll be looking at a better proposal from a neighbor's perspective in terms of reduced massing. Okay, good. Okay, then...
Correct, yes, section, section, sorry, section six was one of the ones that were, that they were, had concerns with ultimately.
Okay, and that's the one that apparently is going to be better the next time you see it. So I think we have everybody happy on a deferral then, but it's up to the panel, so...
Mr. Chair, before we move, I just want to point out an error on the site plan to the applicant, since he's going to have a deferral, have a chance to correct that. I believe your site plan shows all three houses listed as number forty-seven. It's not differentiating between neighboring houses?
Uh, yes, that will be corrected. I'll, I will let the designer know.
Okay, thank you. Anyway, on that note, I would be happy to move deferral, so that the applicant can revise the, the drawings and the application.
Thank you, Mr. Kamork. Is there a second there for Mr. Kamork's motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. All in favor? Okay, that deferral is approved unanimously, and we'll see you all at a later date. So our final deferral on this morning's agenda is item eighteen, four thousand Eglington Avenue West. Actually, the planning department has requested deferral, as has the applicant. Do we have... I'm sorry?
I couldn't hear you. I couldn't hear you. I was like, I'm the applicant. I didn't hear you. I didn't hear you.
Oh, and the, the community planning department of the city? Yeah, okay. Sorry, sorry, I wasn't clear on that.
And the counselor.
And the counselor. So everybody wants to defer this one? Not, no, an apology's unnecessary. So, the agent is Orly Schwartz, available virtually?
Yes. Hi, my name is Orly Schwartz. My address is twenty-eight eleven Dufferin Street. I'm acting as the agent on behalf of the applicant.
Okay.
So we are requesting a deferral of the application based on community planning's recommendations.
Does that, panel, any questions?
No questions.
Okay, then a motion? Oh.
Mr. Chair, I did speak with the area resident here who did ask about some clarification just a minute ago. They're just here to watch at this time, though they are interested in this file.
Okay, but not to speak? Okay, good. Thank you. All right.
I'll move a motion for the item to be deferred, so that the applicant can process more thoroughly with city planning.
Thank you, Mr. Kamork. Is there a second there? Thank you, Mr. Ross. All in favor? That item has been deferred unanimously. Thank you all. Okay, now we can go back to the beginning of the agenda. And start dealing with things in order, starting with item one, seven-two-three Fenmar Drive. This is an application to maintain the existing vehicle body repair shop. There is a single variance requesting reduction in the number of parking spaces provided. This is an identical variance to the one that was approved on this site, seven and a half years ago, where this committee approved the variance for a period expiring on August the third, two thousand twenty-four. So it appears that we have Agent David Algurom.
Good morning.
Hi.
Good morning, everyone. Okay, my name is David Algurom. I am the one who operates at the seven-twenty-three Fenmar Drive, that is in North York. I would wish to continue operate as a repair shop.
And for how long do you wish to continue?
Um, I am not, I don't want to be there for a long period of time. I would say maybe twelve to fifteen years, maybe, more I have.
Fifteen?
Yes.
Fifteen more years?
Years, yes.
And were you there prior to two thousand seventeen?
Yes, I did the same application, two thousand seventeen, and it only lasts for seven years, so they requested for me to do back an application.
Was it, was it a vehicle body repair shop when you acquired it?
Yes, previously, yes.
It doesn't matter, but do you have any idea how long it's been, it's been existing?
Um, I take it over from a gentleman who was there prior, like, probably ten years ahead before I came there.
Prior to that, you don't know?
I don't know, but I think there is previous owner before, but because I think I am probably the third setter person that's there at that location.
Panel, any questions for Mr. Algurom?
Sir, the only, the only variance is, is a parking space variance.
Um, to be honest, this building was there, I think, since nineteen seventy-two, so the, the parking space, it seems like the city have different parking space for different size of buildings. There's, there never be a changes of the building, so their parking remain the same.
Any other questions?
No, if there are no other questions, I'd like to, to move a motion. I just, by way of explanation, before I get into my motion, I believe there, there's been no comment from community planning, so I'm assuming there, and there's been no complaints or we have no comments from any other department. We went through a seven-year, I think, provisional period to see if everything would be okay. It looks like everything's okay. So I'm inclined to move a motion without any conditions and not putting a timeline on it.
Thank you, Mr. Kamork.
So my motion would be to approve with no conditions.
With no conditions, okay. Is there a second there for Mr. Kamork's motion? Mr. Ross, thank you very much. All in favor? That's unanimously approved.
Thank you very much.
So you got fifteen, twenty, twenty-two, whatever you want.
Should retire by that time.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for coming. Okay, we can now move on to item number three, which is forty-nine-seventeen Dundas Street West. This is purposes to legalize and to maintain the second-story side addition and to construct a third-story addition above the existing structure. There are four variances. We have, um, don't really have any, we got an okay from planning. We have an order to comply. And other than that, we don't have any agency comments, no neighbor comments, so, um, is the agent available? David Stickney.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee.
Yeah, could you just give us a brief summary of, uh, of what you're proposing here?
Sure. Um, the building is, um, owner occupied. It's a, it's a family business, it's a variety store on the ground floor, and the family lives upstairs. Uh, the addition that was constructed, um, for the, uh, second story addition was simply to get an entrance to the second floor from the front. Uh, the all previous, uh, entry to the, uh, the upper floor was from the parking area at the back. And then to, uh, to, um, extend up to a third floor. So the first variance is that it's less than the, uh, uh, required amount of foreign addition. That, I, I think is a, is a, is a minor consideration. The original building was a bank, and, um, I believe it was built in the late forties. There were previous applications to put two stories on, onto the building, um, but they were too expensive for the family at the time. The three variances that follow, uh, two, three, and four, all relate to the parking. There's never been a change to the parking uh, behind the building. There's always been six, uh, uh, spaces. They all are substandard, and the lane, the driveway access is, is also, uh, substandard, so, uh, it, there's no change to the condition, um, of, um, the parking a- at the rear, which was approved, I believe, in two thousand and three.
Okay. Is there anything else you think we need to know, or, uh, I can open the matter up to questions now, if that's okay with you?
Of course, yes.
All right, so panel, any questions for Mr. Stickney?
If I could, Mr. Chair, um, the, so you're saying the current use of the second floor is residential. What's the proposed use of the second floor?
It's, it's residential, um-
Because it, it doesn't appear that from, from the drawings.
There's, there's two studios on the second floor, which simply relate to working, uh, at home. Um, if I can what they do is what I'm doing right now, I guess, is that-
But it is a residential use that's being proposed for the second and third floors.
Yes, correct.
Okay, perfect. That's all. I just, I couldn't understand from the drawings what that, what the nature of that second floor was being proposed to be.
Of course, yes.
So the third floor, which is not-
Doesn't exist yet.
That, what, will, will it used to be the same as the second floor for that one?
It's, it's essentially, it's essentially a, a very large, uh, extended family home above their business.
So both floors are gonna be occupied by the, by one occupant?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, understood.
That answers my question.
Okay. Ms. Reddick, do you have any questions, or? Mr. Gully? Okay, then I think we can go into committee for a decision then.
Just to bring to your attention, Mr. Chair members, um, the, the property owner here is present, but, again, their agent is speaking on their behalf, but that's the fellow here that's sitting, just for your record. And the two folks behind my shoulder are, are two agents, so we are fully aware of kind of who's in the chambers at this point.
So nobody wants to speak? Hope I didn't scare you off on my treatment of the first application today. Okay, so we don't have any speakers? We're in committee for a decision.
Chair, I'm gonna move that the four variances being requested be authorized. I believe the variances are minor, appropriate. I'm gonna move approval, uh, with no conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Gully. Is there a second or for? Mr. Ross, thank you very much. All in favor? That application is approved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Stickney. So we can move on to item four. Thirty-seven Grove Tree Road. This application is, the purpose is to construct a second-story addition above the existing dwelling and a rooftop deck. There are three variances. We have, uh, three conditions requested by community planning. And we have clearances from, uh, Ravine and Natural Features and TRCA, and we have a counselor's letter of support. So, uh, Mr. Fiorani is the agent?
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Uh, sir, if you don't mind, I just want to canvas my colleagues here. Panel, is this sufficiently straightforward to proceed without a presentation, in your view?
Yep, I do have questions.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have, yeah. Uh, would you, sir, be okay with, uh, not doing a presentation, because we, I don't think we need it, but answering a, a question or two that we may have?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, I do agree that a presentation, uh, wouldn't be required. I have, uh, read the, uh, planning reports, the ravine report, and the TRCA memo, and I agree with the conditions and recommendations stipulated therein, uh, and I look forward to answering any questions.
Great. Well, that's probably the answer to one of our questions, but, um, any other questions, panel?
So I think, I take it that means you don't have objection to the three planning conditions?
That's correct. He said that.
Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair, no, no, no objections. We've, uh, fully agree with the conditions.
Mr. Kamork?
Yeah, I, I still have a concern with overlook issues from the rooftop patio, and I just have questions related to that. Because essentially, you have just one neighbor. But given the design of that rooftop patio, you're gonna have a pretty fulsome view of their property. Can you just comment on that?
Um, th- through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, originally, the patio was much larger. It was about forty-five square meters. However, we, we did speak with planning staff prior to submitting the application, and, uh, planning staff recommended to reduce it to twelve square meters, which is what we did. And we believe, um, that, that addresses the overlooked concern, because it leaves, uh, available space on the roof uh, to provide, for example, uh, s- some vegetation, some shrubs, and some elements that can ob- uh, obstruct, um, the, uh, the view towards the neighbor and conserve their privacy.
Okay, did you have any correspondence or, uh, interaction with that neighbor?
Um, th- through you, Mr. Chair, um, no, that, that, the, the neighbor, um, I, I don't believe there has been any communication with, with the neighbor, but we have not received any, uh, comments or concerns from them.
So you're saying that your applicant, or that your, um, client did not reach out to speak to their na- to that neighbor, to explain to them what it is that you're proposing to do?
I, 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 I believe efforts have been made, but, um, with, um, without success, but as, as far, as far as I'm aware, I, I, I don't think there has been communications with the neighbor.
Okay, and, um, drawing A eight, you're deleting from your, an agreement to delete, not from your application?
Uh, y- yes, Mr. Chair, one hundred percent.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the panel? Nope. No one in the room to speak to this item? Nope. Anyone online?
No one online, Mr. Chair. I will, uh, let you know when we get to somebody.
Yep, okay. So we can go into committee then for a discussion if necessary, or a motion?
Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion on this item. I believe that, uh, what's being proposed here is appropriate. I've reviewed the variances that are being requested. Uh, planning has, uh, no concerns, other than, uh, three conditions that they, uh, want to impose. Uh, the applicant has agreed to those conditions. I'm gonna move approval, subject to the three conditions that planning stipulated in the report of January the thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you, Mr. Gully. Is there a second or for Mr. Gully's motion? Mr. Ross, thank you. All in favor? That application is approved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Fiorani.
Mr. Chair, if I have a moment here, um, I'd like to microphone check a user that came late, and I don't know who they are. Thank you. Uh, user who's logged in simply as GH. GH, go ahead. Would the user logged in as GH? Go ahead.
Oh, that would be me, and I'm waiting, I'm not until the afternoon, but I'm just, I wanted to make sure I could log in.
Understood. Thank you. When you do log in for the afternoon, we can hear you loud and clear. When you log in for the afternoon session, please include your full name. Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We're good, okay. So moving on to item five-twenty-three Bernimthorpe Park Boulevard. The purpose of this application is to uh, construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage. There are nine variances. We have urban forestry requesting deferral, or alternatively, uh, as set out on January fifteenth in their memo, condition one, with respect to a city tree. We have, uh, clearances from TRCA and Ravine and Natural Features. We have planning conditions, three of them, three support letters, and we have a revised application on this one. Which, uh, let me just take a look at that. What that revision does. Okay, it-
Correcting typos.
Yeah, it clar- it clarifies a typo on I variant six and adds the word located to item seven. Yeah. So, do we have, um, Marco Razzolini?
Yes, good morning, Chair and members of the committee. This is Marco Razzolini from Socora Design Inc., ninety-four Lake Shore Road East, Unit two oh one, Mississauga.
Thank you. Could you, uh, give us like a brief overview of your project here?
Yeah, for sure. So we're aware of the recommendation from forestry. We've been in contact with them, um, over the past few days since receiving the, the notice from them. Their issue is with the driveway location and its proximity to the city tree. The driveway that they're referring to, it's, it's an existing condition, and it is noted as existing on the Arboris report, as well as on the site plan. We also submitted a revised site plan, although after the submission deadline, that more clearly labels the driveway as existing. I think they maybe were not clear that the, the driveway was existing, and they were confused about our site plan on the legend had a hatch saying proposed. The notice refers to it as proposed, but it is existing. It's noted on our Arboris report. Our feeling is that that doesn't justify the request for the deferral, since the tree won't have any additional impact. And it won't be any different than it is today, and the injury and proposed tree protection would be to facilitate construction access, which is also noted in the Arboris report. Um, I also do feel that the location of the driveway is the best location, given the, the shape of the lot. That's on the forestry side. I can give a bit more background on the variances as well, if you'd like.
I, I don't, I don't think we need a variance by variance, uh. Could, could we move maybe questions from the panel and, and just see if there's anything that, uh, is required for clarification? Is that okay? Sir?
Yeah, that's okay, from my side, yes.
Okay, so panel, any questions for, for the agent?
Chair, I, I, I wanted to ask whether or not you've reviewed the three conditions of planning, and if you're okay with those.
Yes, we're okay with them.
Thank you.
I guess I would say if, if we do move for approval of this, uh, notwithstanding your comments about urban forestry, we do abide by their recommendations, so we would, if we approve this, attach their condition number one. You will hopefully have no difficulty resolving that with them, but we, we do not generally ignore, um, urban forestry's conditions.
Yes, we're okay with that.
You're okay with that? Okay. Any other questions, panel? Nope. So let's, can we have a motion then, to make a decision on it?
Sure, I'd be happy to make a motion, Mr. Chair. Um, I would, I believe the variances are minor and meet the four tests, so I would like to move approval, subject to the three planning conditions and forestry condition relating to a city-owned tree.
Thank you, Mr. Kamork. Is there a second or for Mr. Kamork? Mr. Gully, thank you very much. All in favor? That application is approved unanimously. Okay, we can move on to item number six, which is two, no, no, it isn't, yeah, two thirty-seven Grenview Boulevard South. Purpose is to construct a new two-story front and rear addition to the existing dwelling. We have ten variances. And on file, we have, um, urban forestry condition two, transportation conditions, three of them, two support letters, and a revised application. Let's just take a quick look at that revised application. Okay, it, uh, purpose is changed a little bit to construct new two-story front and rear additions, plural. The addition of the word located in variances seven, eight, and oh, two, two variants, eight, two, two number eights, anyway. I guess it's just, it's just repeated. It's identical, correct? No, no, one's north side eaves, one's south. But the numbers didn't change for some reason. So it looks like there may be only nine variances. Anyway. Do we have John Romanov? Agent for this application?
Yes, hello, John Romanov here, uh, architect, Romanov, Romanov Architects, three-seven-five Parkside Drive, Toronto.
Okay. Panel, do, do we need a presentation on it?
I, I would just like to get a clarification on the variances, and whether we, in fact, are dealing with ten or eleven variances.
Fair question.
Um, I, I don't really know how to answer that. Um, I would perhaps defer to staff.
Yeah, my, my confusion is that, um, the way the variances are stated is that they're saying that-
I mean, it's-
I understand the north side and the south side, but what I don't understand is that they're both, the, the wording may need to be corrected, because one is saying the north side from the north side, the other one is saying the south side from the north side, which the second number eight, I, I, it doesn't make sense in my mind.
I think number eight, oh.
Oh.
The second number eight.
I'm sorry.
I'm officially requesting that the AT that writes these notices stop splitting up variances, like the two eights and four and five, because it just makes things confusing. So yes, the second- So yes, the second number eight, I think is a typo. If someone can confirm that it's from the south side lot line.
That's what would work in my brain.
And we can make that fix for the minutes and the decision. So Autumn, can you confirm it's from the south?
I'll have to log into IBMS and get the zoning review.
And and so Madam Chair, we'd be looking at 11 variances then? Or we condense eight into one?
I mean, yes, technically the way it's done, there should be 11. We'll renumber them for the minutes and the decision.
But but we need, these two eights, they 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 both apply to encroachments from the north side lot line. That's not correct, right? Yeah, one should be from the south.
Yeah, if the applicant can just confirm that then.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I would, I would just confirm also that both the eaves that these pertain to and the walls that these pertain to are existing conditions. So the south side setback is is an existing setback as well as the north side.
So sir, would you be agreeable with us changing in the second variance, number eight, the very last line? Changing it from from the north side to the to, from the south side?
South side. Sure, that would be fine with us.
Okay, so I think we can sort of note that in in a motion when we get there. Any other questions, panel?
So so should we be renumbering that as number nine and then nine becomes 10 and 10 becomes 11?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, I just want the applicant to verify because the zoning review did have the error that was translated onto our notice. Which we should have caught and fixed, but that's a conversation for another time. So the applicant is confirming that the second variance number eight is from the south side lot line. I need you to state that publicly.
Yes, I confirm that's correct.
Okay, are we ready then to decide? Yeah. Okay, so we need a motion?
Okay. Actually, I had a question as well, sorry.
Sure, go ahead, ask the question, sorry.
I, we got caught up with all of this, I forgot. I I just wanted some comments on on variance number one, which I I find a little bit on the high side. And if the agent can just give us a little bit of explanation on that.
Sure. Part of the, part of the coverage is due to a deck that we have at the rear, which has basement extension below it. Because there's a basement basement extension below that deck, it's counted as coverage. So that adds approximately three additional percentage to the coverage. Without that counted in, I believe our coverage would be similar to a lot of the houses that are in the neighborhood already.
Okay, yeah, I I just needed some explanation or justification for being able to approve 47% coverage.
Yes.
Personally, I find it too high. So that's fair. So based on that, if no one has any other questions, I'm ready for a motion. So I believe, you know, I find the the variances to meet the four tests. Like to move approval as amended. Subject to three transportation conditions and a forestry condition for a private tree.
And Mr. Camorek, when you say as amended, you mean the revised application?
As revised, sorry.
Plus the the renumbering?
To a total of 11 variances.
And and the change on the second number eight?
Correct.
From north side to south side, okay.
Yeah, all of the stuff that we discussed, in addition to which is noted in the additional materials.
Perfect. Is there a second or for Mr. Camorek's motion? Thank you, Mr. Gully, all in favor? That's unanimously approved, thank you. Moving on to item seven. 39 Struthers Street. Purpose is to construct a new first and second story covered deck in the rear yard. There are two variances. We have a planning condition. A Metrolinks clearance. And that's about all we have on file. So again, pretty straightforward. Panel, do we need a presentation or just leave it up open for questions? Okay for questions only if if we have any? Just check in with the the agent. Osrin Stamback?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Oh, not really. Can you turn your mic up a bit or?
How about, how about now?
Little better. Anyway, sir, I'm going to ask you a question. The panel doesn't require a presentation from you on this. Pretty simple, straightforward application. Would you be okay with instead of presenting to us, just being prepared to answer any questions we may have?
Absolutely, Mr. Chair, and I have, of course, read the planning report and completely agree with their recommendations.
Great to know. So you're okay with us just proceeding to answer, asking questions? Before, before, before we make a decision? Okay, that's great. So panel, any questions for?
Chair, I just want a confirmation from the applicant that he understands that one of the planning conditions is for a 1.8 opaque privacy screen. You're okay with that, right?
Absolutely, through you, Mr. Chair.
He said he was okay with that.
Thank you.
Any other questions, panel? Okay, then we can entertain a motion then?
Chair, I'm prepared to move approval of this application. There are two variances, both variances in my view are appropriate, minor. I'm going to move approval subject to the planning condition one of January the 10th. And the Metrolinks was just advisory. I don't think there are any UFCs applicable to this application. So with that one condition, move approval.
Thank you, Mr. Gully. Second or for Mr. Gully's motion? I'll give that one to to Sophia. All in favor? Unanimously approved, thank you. I'll just check in with my colleagues here. Does anybody desire a break now or at some point? At some point, but not this point. We're okay to proceed for a while?
Yeah.
Alrighty, let's do that then. Go to item eight. Which is 26 Humheller Road. We have a revised agenda. Purpose of the application is to construct a one-story rear addition and a new front porch. The existing ancillary structures will be maintained. We have six variances. We have a planning condition of approval. Nothing else on file. Panel, are we in need of a presentation or are we okay with keeping it open to questions? Okay, let's do that then. Let's check in with Mr. Romano.
Mr. Chairman, Franco Romano, Arch and Planning, 321 Lake Shore.
Yeah, thanks, sir. So we we've just discussed, as you hopefully heard, we're okay without a presentation from you on this. It's a pretty simple, straightforward matter. Are you okay with proceeding on the basis of answering any questions we may have?
Yes, with one exception, I'm just going to formally revise that rear yard landscaping to 40%, 64.45 square meters as identified there in variance number four.
Yep.
And we're okay with the planning staff condition.
Perfect, perfect, perfect. Okay, panel, questions? No questions? Then I think we can move to into committee for a motion then.
Chair, I I find this application to be appropriate. It does justify the variances that are being requested today. I'm going to move approval subject to planning condition. One planning condition that was transmitted to us, dated January the 9th.
Thank you, Mr. Gully. Second or for Mr. Gully's motion?
I'll second it.
Mr. Camorek, thank you, all in favor? That application is approved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Romano. Moving on to item nine, 6 Rockingham Drive. Purpose is to construct a new driveway in the front yard. There are three variances. We have urban forestry requesting denial. Offering a fallback of condition one in their January 15th memo to us. Condition one being with respect to a city-owned tree. Other than that, we have no other comments or conditions from agencies, no comments from neighbors. Again, do we need a presentation or can we just move into conditions? Ah, questions? You okay? All right with that? Okay, Mr. Ramirez?
Yes, good morning.
Yeah, good morning. Are you okay with not presenting to us? We don't think it's necessary. This is pretty simple and straightforward, your application is. Could we, in lieu of a presentation, just ask you any questions if we have any?
Yes, that's okay.
Okay. All right, so panel, questions?
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
In, sorry, in your application or your Arboris report recommends permeable pavers for the driveway. Are you okay with that if we impose that as a condition? I believe that would address forestry's issues with that tree as well.
Yes, as per the Arboris report, yes, we we are okay with that condition.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Okay, then I think we can move into committee then. Or a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'm prepared to do a motion. I believe the application meets the four tests. I would like to move approval subject to forestry condition one and subject to the driveway being constructed with permeable pavers as outlined in the applicant's Arboris report.
Thank you, Mr. Camorek. Is there a second or for Mr. Camorek's motion? Mr. Ross, thank you, all in favor? That application is approved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Item 10 has been deferred. Could move on to item 11. 9 Wallace Avenue. Which is, purpose is to construct a second story addition above the existing dwelling. A two-story rear and west side additions. An attached garage at the front. A covered front porch. A covered deck in the rear yard. The existing detached garage in the rear yard will be attached to the main dwelling and will be converted to living space. This will be considered a new dwelling. No, I don't have the same thinking about simplicity and clarity on this one. So I think, I think we do need a brief a lot of moving parts. So I think we would benefit from a presentation. There are nine variances. We have urban forestry condition two and planning has a condition. And in additional information, we just recently received a a support petition. I think there were five or six signatures on that. Oh, we do have no, I'm looking at a different one. Yeah, that's where we stand. Now, just before we move on, I've been very remiss in not learning about the reasons you three folks are here today. Could I just sort of look at you and you tell me what number that you're here to, if you're here to speak to an item and which one?
This is the area resident for item number 16. This is John here.
16.
Yes.
John Males. Perfect. And you, ma'am?
Item number 19.
19.
Agent for 19.
Agent for 19.
Correct.
Sorry?
Yeah, he's the area resident for 16. Agent for 19. Agent for 12.
Agent for 12?
Yes.
Okay, well, you're already typed in here, so I'm not going to miss any of you. Perfect.
We got it under control, Mr. Chair.
Beautiful. Okay, so Marco Vera is the agent for item 11, 96 Wallace Avenue.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Marco Vera is the agent and designer for this application. I'm at 257 Dunraven Drive.
Okay. So yeah, if we could have a presentation from you, sir?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. So as you summarized, the application before you is for a new dwelling by way of renovation, where the extent of the renovation will alter more than 50% of the existing dwelling. Our design intent is to use the existing footprint to establish existing side yard setbacks along the east side and maintain such setbacks. The front yard setback is being improved, actually, even though we have variances with projections to it. There is an existing one-story addition that has been built in the past, the existing dwelling. Our proposal is to remove that addition and introduce a front porch and large window feature in the front of the dwelling. That is why we have variances five to nine tied to some of the projection because we don't actually comply with the existing setback. And the other moving part of the puzzle is to, as we add to the back and due to the close proximity of the existing garage, we are now going to connect that existing garage to the back of the dwelling. It will remain as a one-story space. The second floor along the west side is, has been pushed back away from the property line, therefore minimizing amassing and impacting adjacent neighbors. The extent of the two-story portion of this house is in keeping with the length of the two houses on each of the sides of our proposal. We feel that the changes that we crafted by using the existing footprint and built form is in keeping with the character. The lot is very large. It allowed us to use the existing garage while still maintaining and exceeding the minimum required soft landscaping in the rear, rear yard setbacks. Front landscaping is also maintained and we're not asking for a variance for a lot coverage. So we believe that the articulation of our design with the existing conditions makes this application meet the four tests. We did have brief discussions with planning. Planning did prepare a report where they highlight or intend to use the existing form. They don't have any concerns. We are aware of the forestry for condition number two, which we have no objections to. And I asked the committee to approve this application before you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vera. Panel, any questions for the, for Mr. Vera?
I I have one of, yeah, Mr. Chair. Mr. Vera, number 94 is not on your support petition. It's the property that's going to be most affected by this. Particularly the length of the dwelling length variance. And can I just get some feedback as to what correspondence has taken place with that immediate neighbor?
I believe the initial, there's conversations when we started the design earlier on. But I don't know if they've expressed any concerns to to my client throughout the the process and and here today as we arrived at this proposal. They haven't expressed any similar to the neighbor to the other side. The, our client has known some people in the area that have gone through similar projects and has obtained The, our client has known some people in the area that have gone through similar projects and has obtained some support from other neighbors along the street, but from the exact neighbor on the side, I am not aware of any concern arising from them.
Okay, but if they've been contacted directly and been informed of the project, et cetera, I mean, i- it's somewhat mitigated in that the garage exists, but it, it is a rather lengthy house.
Yes, and to you, Mr. Chair, we feel that by using the footprint of it, where we're not excavating or altering any disturbance along the property line was best. That's why part of the dwelling has also been pushed away. And because we're on the east side, we won't be shadowing or creating issues of overlook on that side, so I, I think this is probably why he hasn't expressed a concern.
Thank you.
Any other questions, panel? Okay, I think we can go into committee then for a decision.
Chair, prepare to speak on this item. Again, in this application, I find that the application is a good planning application. There are variances that are being requested. I think the variances do, are appropriate in this case at this location of the site. And I'm happy to see that planning is tying them to the site plan, so I'm gonna move approval subject to the planning condition for site plan dated November the sixth and urban forestry condition.
Thank you, Mr. Gully. Is there a secondor for Mr. Gully's?
I'll second it.
Ms. Reddick, thank you. All in favor? That's approved unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Committee members?
Okay, we are now going to take a short break. Ten minutes? No.
Thirteen minutes? Cause they go, they go uneven. Even numbers, right?
Come back for one, or eleven? Eleven. AM, Mr. Chair, thank you. That's okay.
That's eighteen minutes. Is that good?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So, what time are we coming back?
Eleven.
We will be back for eleven.
And we will have six applications to deal with. Before lunch. Perfect.
But like I say, some of the things they were ordered to were the only place they must be found was in the hospital.
Yeah.
Well, it's not just that. My job in IT was actually make sure that all of the liberals and hardware developers, network people, infrastructure and any other suppliers all work. They offer something whatever it is. Deadline never change. Deliveries relate. But I was very good at what I did. I will tell you, there were times when I thought one thing, and I really should not side off.
And their houses. And important situations.
I know they should know what to know, what to say. Okay, but they, they never take women's fur line. Not a part of the agreement. But for a while, they seem to go to the table, and that was really Oh, yeah, city house. It really looked great. I have been down there, so I would have looked at what's why are most of the things something that would require until I showed up and not realize when I mentioned I would want Steve Wilson's still in there?
I, I appreciate
That's okay. What leave, they just said they didn't have a business. It just didn't make sense having them up in there. So, that made that your interest in part that you drove, if you have any interest in it? Really, really missed being able to have that.
To me, that people, that she raised the trees, the tree they growed, it would actually split.
I have several stocks that I need some of the days, you can talk to her. There was an eye close there. Are you aware that the city tower that went through the sand yard lot? I've got photos when I, when it was, when it was vacated, and I have some of these signs, whatever else we were in. Some way to remember from those doors. Looks like water, I can't, I don't know. I thought I would find a place for it. Especially off Quite a distance, but get this, get this a little bit Ah, hurry up. Now that I traveled, I was a few I was supposed to I learned the tracks, so I was on, but I got off the road, the road and the station, so I they got a new course, but I don't know, they told me, but when I lived in math, they said, oh, yes, that's a big problem.
That's gonna be the challenge.
I would say, how many of these are We just had some trees, backyard.
Two minute warning?
Two minute warning.
I was gonna say, wait, what do you think?
What's that?
I said two minute warning, what did I drop?
They used to, you know, came for a while. Oh, great.
I wonder if the night is like, how, how does it sound?
Alright, Mr. Chair, we will, we can look to get started here. Item twelve.
Item number twelve is one one five Lothian Avenue. Purpose is to construct a second-story addition. There are four variances. And we have Magen, Agent Andrew Miskiv.
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, committee.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Gabrielle, can I just check in with my colleagues for a minute? I think this is pretty straightforward. I'm wondering, do any of us need or require a presentation?
I don't believe we do, sure.
Okay. Sir, are you okay with not presenting to us but being prepared to answer any questions that we might have of you?
Of course.
Okay, let's do it that way then. So panel, any questions for Mr. Guducci?
Are you okay with the planning?
Yes, we are. It is in, I think, in actually enforcing, reinforcing what I have submitted as well to committee as far as the documentation and explanation of that variance. So I do agree with what planning is referring to.
And the urban forestry conditions, two and three? You okay with them?
Uh, yes. Yep, those are fairly typical, expected. Thank you.
Any other questions? So let's go into committee and make a decision.
Chair, I'm going to move that the application be approved. There are five variances of being requested, all very minor individually, collectively. Move approval subject to the planning report, which ties it to the site plan dated November the 5th and urban forestry condition.
Thank you, Mr. Gully. Is there a second for Mr. Gully's motion? Mr. Ross, thank you all. All in favor?
No, it's just two forestry conditions.
Okay, yeah, we've added those, two and three. Planning and urban forestry, two and three. Okay, so I think we've already made and seconded a motion, but can we make sure that that's done sort of on the floor? I don't have to go through the politics. I'm just gonna ask for a show of hands. All in favor? Approved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Guducci. Item fourteen has been deferred. Item fifteen is fifty-three Bywood Drive. This is, uh... Purpose is to construct a rear basement addition. Two variances, one dealing with the permitted dwelling length and one dealing with the permitted dwelling depth. So a ten-plus meter increase to the dwelling length and an eight-plus meter variance to the permitted dwelling depth. Panel, do we need the agent to tell us a little bit more about what's planned and what it looks like here? Or are we... Is it simple enough that we go to questions if we have any? What's your thinking?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask if there was concern on the condition of the plan.
Well, okay, let's just save that question. We're okay with moving into questions? Okay, so Mr. Ventaruzzo?
Good morning, Honorable Chair and members of the committee. My name is Daniel Ventaruzzo of Mars Design, Inc., of Ninety-One Skyway Avenue. I'm the authorized agent on this application.
Okay. So sir, are you okay with just moving to questions and not having a presentation here? It's a pretty straightforward application here.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. And I've read the planning and forestry reports. Yeah, I'm fine. And I've read the planning and forestry reports. I have no objections to the conditions.
Good, so you're okay with urban forestry and planning?
Yep.
Yep, okay. So, um... Let's go into committee then.
Wait, 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 wait. I have a question. And it's really a question for staff, and I'm just trying to under... I guess this is an upcoming training session, but we haven't gone through it yet. Because this is all below ground, I'm assuming that's why there's no rear yard variance? Rear yard setback variance? Because it's only, like, they're less than a meter from the rear yard on this.
I'm not entirely clear if that is the case. Like, why they haven't picked up the rear yard?
No, because we have the variance for the building length, which is understood. But why is there no variance for rear yard setback? Can the... Does the agent have a...
If I may?
Yeah, please.
Yeah. Through you, Chair. Yes, because this is completely underground, the rear yard variance would not be required as there's no visible structure above grade.
Well, but yet, the building length could be the same argument. It's gonna be not visible, yet that variance is required.
There's... Yes, through you, Chair. There's a very specific revision that was made to building length and depth, which include the words that the length and depth is taken to all main walls of the building, both above and below ground.
Okay.
Whereas the rear yard variance does not state that. A rear yard does not state that, sorry.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, I'm good. I just wanted to understand that.
Okay, no other questions? So, Mr. Ross, I think you were prepared to make a motion on this one?
Uh, yeah, I was gonna move that we approve the application subject to the planning condition.
What about forestry?
And forestry, sorry.
So move to approve subject urban forestry condition two and planning condition. A second for that motion? Ms. Reddick, thank you very much. All in favor? That application is approved unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to fifty-four A Cannon Road. Purpose is to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage. There are eight variances.
Mr. Chair, I believe staff are requesting a deferral on this item?
I was just about to say that.
Okay, sorry.
Community planning has requested deferral. We have urban forestry conditions one and two. We have four opposition letters. We have a revised application in the additional materials. And we have area resident John Males in the house who wishes to speak to this matter. So, we...
Is someone to speak, given that it's gonna be deferred? We don't know.
Yeah, we don't know. So we need to hear from Amber Stewart, the agent.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. My name is Emmanuel.
Oh, Emmanuel, what's your last name?
Zambazis. I believe Mrs. Stewart emailed you guys about this.
Were aware of this gentleman? Staff?
Yeah, we got an email earlier this morning saying that she had a conflict between two scheduled C of A meetings, and that if she wasn't gonna be able to present that fellow.
Emmanuel, is that the same address, or...
Emmanuel, can you confirm the address, your address?
Yes, fifty-four A Cannon Road.
Oh, a different address, too.
Your address, where your business is located, not the address of the file in question.
Uh, three-eight-three Broadview Avenue.
Okay. Sir, you're aware that the planning department has requested that this matter be deferred due to...
Yes, planning's...
Yeah, are you in agreement with that request?
Yes.
You are? Okay, good. So... Mr. Males, the applicant is agreeable to a deferral, in which case we would not be hearing this matter today. Are you in agreement with that?
That's fine.
That's fine?
I assume that either there'll be a new application...
The planner said we could likely get on the February twentieth agenda.
No.
Here's a quick answer to that question. Mr. Males?
Yes, my name is John Males, and I live at thirty-nine Clover Hill Road since two thousand thirteen.
Is that fairly close to this?
Yeah, yes. The property is basically directly behind and one lot or one property over.
Okay.
So, the applicant has built two homes known as forty-six and fifty-two Cannon Road. I was directly behind the previously single old home that was known as fifty-two before it was sold, and those new homes were built according to the plant, uh, plans that you have on file. So, yes, I am directly behind. And in fact, part of thirty-nine shows on some of the documents, just simply because it does, not because I asked it.
And what, you got a very large building behind you. What's that? Number forty-five?
Oh, forty-five is the Catholic school, Saint Mark's Catholic School.
Okay.
It's not behind, it's right beside me.
Yeah, yeah.
Where I live.
Yep, I see you.
Okay, I'm not the owner of thirty-nine Clover Hill Road, just to be clear. I rent a room. I've had a work injury from twenty years ago that's changed my life.
You're still a neighbor?
Yes. So...
So we're not, we don't, we're not gonna discuss the merits, right?
No, that's okay. No, so if it's gonna be deferred, does that mean I get to make written submissions, whatever else at a future time as a result of this application? That's all I wish to know. And that's fine. Thank you, gentlemen.
Now, do you, maybe this is for staff, or you, as a tenant, do you get a direct notice directly to you?
No. And even though I submitted to the applicant's previous, um, application from about a year ago, I received no notice. I learned about this because someone who knows me came down and told me. And just so that you're aware, the sign that's posted hasn't been there for five days. It's in disrepair due to the weather. It's very flimsy.
Okay, well, that's good information.
Which was one of the points that I was gonna raise, but just so that you know, that was a factor probably in why all the applications that came in that were opposed all at once was because of a sign issue.
Okay.
Okay, so just to clarify, if there was a previous application, you don't automatically get notified for the next one? But because you're here today, just make sure you fill out that card.
This one here?
And then that way, yeah, and that way, Adam will notify you when it does get rescheduled.
Sure.
So as a tenant, you don't automatically get that.
And I get a little more time to be a little more coherent in my written application, or written submission.
But just to clarify, no notices were mailed for the hearing today because of the postal strike, so we notified through the newspaper, the sign posting...
Oh, yes, and there's still a problem.
And the web.
Yeah.
But for the applicant, just to make sure the next time the sign is posted, please make sure you post it within the right time and that it stays posted throughout the whole ten days prior to the hearing.
Just so you know, the sign from last year is still there, but this one hasn't even lasted the basic weather.
Great information.
So they are supposed to, so just to notify the applicant, you are supposed to use the correct material to withstand inclement weather. So please make sure your next sign is made from the correct materials. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Males, for coming and sharing that very critically important information.
Thank you. I was a lot of problems showing up with you deferring it. That's my, by me.
Maybe we'll see you in a few months?
Yes.
Okay.
Better weather.
Yeah.
Better weather, yes.
Better weather for sure. I guarantee it. I guarantee it. Yes, write that down. It's gonna be warmer when he comes back.
That go in a minute?
Yes. So, we have a request for a deferral. We have the neighbors' agreement to that deferral. Can we have a motion to decide on that deferral?
I'll move a motion to defer for multiple reasons.
You wanna name one or two of them?
Well, there's a notice issue. The sign wasn't properly posted.
Planning more, needs more...
Planning needs more time to process.
And he's got lots of opposition and time to address that, I guess, so... So move for deferral for a variety of reasons. Is there a second, or? Mr. Ross? Yes?
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor? Deferred unanimously. Thanks again, Mr. Males.
Thank you.
And Emmanuel, I'm sorry, I didn't get your last name, but anyway, thank you. So moving on to item seventeen. One oh-four Langdon Avenue. Again, we have Marco Viera as the agent. We have a revised application. Uh, just wanna see. Yeah. So this is to legalize and maintain the detached garage in the rear yard. Four variances. We have an order to comply, I guess which prompted today's hearing on this. Four variances. Clearance from TRCA. A planning condition. Panel, is this sufficiently straightforward to obviate the need for a presentation? Or does anyone request one? We can move to questions otherwise? Okay. So, Mr. Viera, are you content to not present but answer any questions if we have any?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. I am. Just wanted to make it on record that we did discuss this application at depth with planning due to the current condition of the rear yard not having permeable pavers or even soft landscaping. So original proposal was just over eight percent, in which we've worked with the client and planning to force and include the removal of some of the hardscaping in the rear yard in order to increase the soft landscaping, allow for more water infiltration. And I believe the proposal before you has, you know, reached at a good compromise, as well as also providing permeable pavers to the driveway portion from the back of the house, leading to the front of the garage.
Yep.
So if you do have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, it looks like the planning department has incorporated that into their condition. So you're okay with their condition of approval, I presume?
Three minutes, Chair, we are.
Yeah, good, okay. So panel, any other questions? If not, we could go into committee and entertain a motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we're prepared to move a motion. I believe the application meets the four tests. I'd like to move approval subject, as revised, and subject to the planning condition outlined.
Okay, so, is there a second for Mr. Kamar's motion? Mr. Ross? Was it you? Okay.
Yeah.
Yep, okay. All in favor? That's approved unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Viera? Number eighteen has been deferred. So the final item on this morning's agenda is number nineteen. And I know that Peggy Chu, the agent, is here. Uh, just do a quick summary of this application. Pull that down a little bit. There you go.
Good morning.
Just, just, if you don't mind, I'd just like to read out a little summary before we get into the discernment on these. So the purpose is to construct a two-story rear addition, a second-story addition along the east side of the dwelling, two one-story front additions, a covered front porch and a covered rear yard deck. Uh, this is on, with respect to forty-three Spring Brook Gardens. The agent is Peggy Chu from Peggy Chu Architect, Inc. We have urban forestry requesting refusal or in the alternative, uh, condition two regarding a privately owned tree. And we have a planning condition. And in our additional material, we received a cover letter. So Ms. Chu, if you could identify yourself, give us your address and, and talk to us.
Sure thing. Peggy Chu, Peggy Chu Architect, one-twenty-four Merton Street, Suite five oh five, Toronto.
Okay, so do you want to tell us a bit about your project?
Sure.
And maybe just respond to the planning condition, whether or not you're okay with it?
Yes, we are, and I think...
Okay, you've already answered that one.
Yeah, and our cover letter...
The other one would be urban forestry.
Yes, and that's why I am here in person today, because...
Oh, good.
We, we, we were only circulated and received the comments from urban forestry after the submission deadline, so we were not able to submit anything in advance to present the supporting documentation. I did bring it with me, but I understand I may not be able to circulate it, so I don't know. They're really just photos of the tree and the context and the neighborhood.
Now, you're aware that urban forestry, although they're requesting denial, they're giving us an opportunity as a fallback to impose condition number two regarding a privately owned tree.
We, yes, and so we...
January fifteenth, they advised that, us of that.
That's right. We actually already submitted a permit, a permit application for removal in October, which is why we're kind of caught a little off-guard and surprised that we did not actually hear from urban forestry ahead of time. So, and, and so I wanted to speak to the context of the minor variance item that they requested refusal for or deny, which is the proposed density or floor space index. So what we are requesting is a point five eight times the lot area, whereas point four five times is permitted. However, again, in context, we are not applying or nor requesting for a lot coverage variance. We are under. So, we are permitted thirty-three percent lot coverage, and we are at twenty-eight. So, twenty-eight point five...
Twenty-eight percent lot coverage?
Twenty-eight percent.
With the FSI variance?
That's right. So it's not a, it's not a footprint question, it's a vertical massing question, and that actually does, you know, that's not the impact on the tree in question. And I want to also just highlight, the tree is actually within the permitted building envelope for this property, and the supporting material, I wish I could...
Page seven of her report shows that very clearly.
Yes, so actually, i- if you could go back to the first page, there is a context, sort of like aerial view of the property and, and the context, yeah, just a little further down. So you'll see in the red arrow, that's the tree in question. It is pretty much smack dab in the middle of the property, and it's, in the next few photos, you'll see it is a very tall silver maple that just looms over this house. And current horticultural best practice would tell us that a silver maple should not be planted closer than fifty to a hundred feet of a home or a structure, just by virtue of the species and how fast-growing it is, that it is inherently structurally weak. So just as an authority for context, Homes and Gardens ranks silver maples number four of eight species of trees not to plant near a home, right? So, and, and the reason why we applied for a tree removal permit rather than a tree injury permit is because this tree, sorry, if I could trouble someone to just scroll that a little further, it's a very tall tree. It's well over sixty feet, and it really hangs over not only the, my, my client's home, but the next-door neighbor's home at forty-five Spring Brook Gardens. So just for the record, we have six letters from neighbors who have no objections to the proposal. They did discuss this condition with the neighbor immediately next door. They have no objections. It is a tree that is already losing limbs. Just recently, there were two branches that came down that were seven to eight feet. It is immediately outside of their house, right? So when they come out of their back door, right, this is the tree that hangs over their backyard. We agree, like, there are, the trees are valuable, they just, this one is just poorly situated. And the family that, you know, owned the property fifty years ago that planted the tree had probably no idea that it's not advisable, but you know, fifty years later, we have to kind of correct a mistake.
These trees started growing, there was no expectation to be building out and up, and...
Certainly, and I think, like, and I appreciate, like, at the time, the homeowners may have desired, you know, privacy or shade, but as you can see in the context, it's a very tall tree, and it is a species...
Sorry, that, that photo there, what direction is that looking at?
It's looking sort of northwest.
Looking to the north.
Yeah, so, I mean, it is getting the benefit of the south sun, but as you can see, like, the house is entirely in its shade, right?
So it pretty well shades the house all day.
Most, mostly from late morning to early afternoon, but, I mean, like, yeah. What's that?
That's all day as far as we're concerned.
Yeah.
We don't care about early morning and the time around here.
Yeah, well, I mean, you know, for late sun. I mean, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Were, were you suggesting, though, the tree is also a danger the way it is?
Yeah, and I, I did want to make that point, that, like, we did, we are not, you know, approaching this without, like, information, you know, tree removal versus, versus tree injury. As you can see, the next-door neighbor did build a new home in two thousand and seven that injured the tree, and they were able to do so. But we understand, like, this tree at this age and at this size is a, is a hazard potentially in the future, and so we are not neglecting, right, that potential. So for us, I think tree removal, I mean, I, I understand tree removal is not the purview of this committee, but this is the issue, right, that we are faced with.
Okay, so thanks. So in summary, we have a very complex renovation project here, which has, I would suggest, minimal impact on the zoning provisions. Are there any other questions for Ms. Chu on, on her presentation or the application?
My only question, again, pertains to the tree. Forestry is, you know, in the alternative to refusal, is requesting permit to injure or, well, forestry condition two. How is that gonna affect you? I mean, you're obviously, as you say, you've made an application to remove, and you've not heard anything back on it.
Their, um, their last correspondence with us is to wait until we have completed our plan application. And I just, what, did want to add that it is the mandate of Urban Forestry Services and Tree Protection Plan Review to regulate removal, but also to stipulate, right, the replacement value and, and of the tree, and we fully respect that.
Okay, so you would be okay with that condition, then?
Yes, and like I said, we've already applied.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Chu. So any more questions, panel? So we can go into committee then for a decision.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion on this item. I believe that what's being proposed, the, the expansion to this home, I think is very pleasing in terms of fitting into the community and the rest of it. It's expanding a home that's slightly small. The FSI that's being requested is reasonable, going to, from zero-point-four-five to zero-point-five-eight. The maximum height, nine-point-five to nine-point-six, again, nominal, and the front yard setback of six, sixty-nine-point-five, again, very nominal. I think as far as the variances that are being, being requested are concerned, I think they should be authorized. I'm gonna move approval subject to planning condition number one, which speaks to the elevations, and on the plan dated December the twelfth, and subject to urban forestry condition number two.
Thank you, Mr. Gully. Is there a second for Mr. Gully's motion? Ms. Reddick, thank you. All in favor? That application is approved unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Chu, for your patience and your presentation. So we will reconvene at one PM with the second part of the agenda. We have an hour and twenty-seven minutes for lunch.
Sounds great, Mr. Chair. We'll do our microphone check approximately twelve forty-five. Thank you.
Perfect.